I'd like to welcome everybody to the May the 10th, 1918 City Council Meeting. This time, I think Reed Barbie was supposed to give the invocation. I don't see him here yet, so I've asked Kyle Hawkins if he'd be so kind to stand and join us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Please pray with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for today, and we thank you for the blessings in our lives, and we thank you for the ability to gather together today and work towards wonderful things down in our city, and we just ask that you bless this meeting and preside over it, and bless everyone as they move forward with their lives the rest of this weekend and keep everyone safe. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Livinggood, would you lead the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Call this meeting, Georgia. Agenda item number two is attendance roll call.
No wonder you didn't send that, I guess.
Peterson.
Here.
Swager.
Here.
Alvedras.
Send it.
Here.
Kron.
Livinggood.
Here.
Hoffman.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Wagner.
Here.
Agenda item number three is public comments and announcements. One announcement I want to make first before we get started. We didn't get an opportunity to do a proclamation or do anything, but so we're just going to do it verbally. Today, I'm going to declare today Lois Boston Day. Lois Boston's celebrating 105 years of fruitful life on this planet we call Earth, and I think that is deserving of recognition, and she's still going strong out there at the Heritage Center. So with that, I'll take anybody have public comments or announcements. Mr. Howell.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to let you know that David Harris, our program director for the last two years, has accepted a position in Texas. It's a very responsible position. It was with the Guadalupe Blanco River Authority. He's the Deputy Executive Manager of Water Quality and Operations. They'll be serving over 200,000 customers, covering five counties, six wastewater treatment plants, five water treatment plants, two dams, and hydroelectric plants, a capacity of 160,000 gallons per minute, and also managing 180 acres of recreation areas and boat ramps. David is from Texas. He has, he came here to help get things going. He's done an outstanding job. We will be honoring him and his service on May the 24th, and you'll get an invitation to that. He will be here until June the 6th. He will stay under a consulting agreement with IBTS for the next several months for technical advice and consultant, either by email or telephone and so on regarding our water and wastewater systems and gas system. I'm also very proud to announce that we are, as many of you, we've shared with you, focusing on several key matters in our partnership with the city. Those are currently community development issues with all the pending development that may be coming to Guyman, that we believe is coming to Guyman. We really need to focus more on that. We've made arrangements to, we've actually got some really good leads on filling the Planning Director position and the Code Compliance Officer position. We've got a plan in place. We discussed with the city manager today in the interim period until those people can be on board to focus on that and have those positions staffed. Communication is a key. We'll be rolling out a communication plan over the next few weeks to the citizens as well as to the council at performance and obviously cost containment, trying to deliver highly effective services at an efficient price to the city. I'm very happy to announce Greg Blunt. Greg, if you would stand, please. Greg has been with IBTS for 12 years. He has accomplished in building codes and fire codes and development codes. He actually was here at the birth of the partnership with myself when we came to Guyman. First time I heard the word "Guyman" was from Greg Blunt through the OML Communications. He has been a program manager and a branch manager in several states. He is a certified ISO 9000 and QS 9000 process and quality auditor. He was with Underwriter Labs at one point in his career, and that was his job was quality assurance on some of the processes. He has authored, been published in the International City County Management Association and spoken at several of those organizations. Greg will be here through at least the end of the year, and will be serving in the capacity as Program Director, and we're very pleased to have him. He has stayed very busy in a lot of other endeavors for IBTS, but we value the relationship in Guyman, and we want to give you the very best that we have, once we learned that David would be taking on another assignment, so I wanted to make that announcement. I'll be glad to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Any other public comments or announcements? Any other public comments or announcements? Agenda item number four is approval of the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number five is presentation of proclamation declaring the week of May 13th through 19th, 2018, as the National Police Week. See, we have several officers in attendance, and the chief, if you all would like to come up to the front, we'll read this and recognize you defined people. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officer Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15th falls is National Police Week, and whereas the members of the law enforcement agencies of Guyman, Texas County, and the state of Oklahoma play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Guyman, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocents against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the law enforcement agencies of Guyman, Texas County, and the state of Oklahoma unceasingly provide a vital public service, I, Kim Peterson, Mayor of Guyman, Oklahoma, and the City Council, call upon all citizens of Guyman's to observe May 15th, 2018, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Now therefore, I, Kim Peterson, Mayor of Guyman, Oklahoma, and the City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 13th through 19th, 2018, to be National Police Week in Guyman, Oklahoma. Chief.
You know, the law enforcement profession as it is today is much different than it was over 20 years ago when I started. We have had challenges and, you know, different setbacks over the years, but we have a really great group of men and women that serve our community. These are some of the ones that are out protecting you day and night, rain, snow, holidays, bad weather, all of that stuff, and not only for serving the citizens of Guyman, I would like to tell you all thank you for what you do for me and for our department and as well as the citizens of Guyman. To the, starting at the left is Lieutenant Mike Lawren. He's also one of our K-9 handlers. Next is Officer Jacob Bankston, Officer Travis McDowell, Detective Cassidy Francis, Sergeant Jamie Gandy, and Sergeant Derek Hamilton. He is also one of our K-9 handlers. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you so much. Agenda number six is presentation of the monthly activities and financial report by artist incubation.
Can you hear me? So I brought with us Consuela McFadden. Some of you know her. She must increase, and I'm going to decrease. She's going to be coming in here as she gets comfortable to make a report to you of what's going on over there. She's been with us, what, two weeks now?
Not quite. Six days.
And we're really impressed so far, and we think we can do a lot of good and grow our business with her over there, so I wanted you to know. We're proud to have her also. I have three other ladies here, two board members, and then our bookkeeper and helper, Doris Henderson. I want to remind you who some of our board members are. Claudia Patterson is our chairperson there, and we have Brenda Neville, two mysteriously absent tonight. Brenda Neville, who?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sorry. Brenda Neville is absent and Maria is present. All right. And Jim Quimby, I don't know where he is. Anyways, so I wanted you to know about Consuela. What will she be doing? She'll be, she's already going to increase the number of classes. Kids Art Classes are really growing, and we decided to turn and have those weekly now, right? About weekly? We're getting ready for a summer art camp. So with the Kids Art Classes, there'll be 2D and 3D classes each week, so you'll be able to paint and do some pottery, and so if you have kids, you know, just check into that. But those are really growing for us, our summer art camps. We are still trying to find a way to move forward with our licensed kitchen, and there's some good things, I think, in the works on that, so that's all I'll say about that at this time. Before I'm done, though, this board, they're hardworking people, and you know, I've realized we've not been turning in to you all the volunteer hours we have, but our board also donates food products throughout the year. Probably everybody gives several hundred to, I mean, at the end of the year, you know, 1,200, 1,400 a year for each event. We provide, you know, refreshments and things, and so there's some donations that you've never seen on our reports, so I'll try to change that if you'd like to see those on there. And that helps us for grant writing, too, if you have volunteer hours and things like that, so we need to be keeping, keeping those, and we'll share those with you. Dinner on the Lake has been, we don't know the date on that at this point. We always have to line up boats. Let's see, art shows by OPSU and local artists, those continue to go on. And I want to remind you, when we do marketing and advertising, we put the city of Guyman's logo. We just sent off our school flyers. I think we do 2,700 flyers for all the Guyman School kids. We put your logo on there that you're a sponsor of everything we do with them for the summer camps. Those are going to be the last three weekdays in June. I think it's the 27th, 28th, 29th for the summer art camps there. So we have been using your logo and crediting you for your sponsorship and your support and your sponsorship and any help you can lend to us means an awfully lot to us. We appreciate everything you've done thus far, and I think that our better days, I think our best days are still ahead of us. Would you agree, ladies, anything on that? And, I don't know.
Do you guys have any questions for me?
We're real glad to have her, so I guess that's our report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Agenda item number seven is presentation of monthly activities and financial report by Main Street Council.
Okay, in April, we had our lunch mob. I don't have the numbers because we attended the Catholic Church's Spring Salad Luncheon, which I hear they really liked, meaning the ladies who went liked the food. The Shop Local Coalition Committee met. We listened, Sally Hawkins came and presented and talked about her Live Local. I mean, is it Live Local or Live Local? I'm not sure. Do you know Mitch?
Live.
Talk according how you feel about it.
Yeah, if it's live, I mean, Sally was live. Anyway, and Elizabeth Brown spoke about an app that's going now on the cell phones that will help with retail. Community cleanup in April, we had, these are ones that were reported to me, we had 85 volunteers that put in 229 reported hours, and that's, none of, none of your employees are counted in that, so, and by the way, they were really good to work with. We had crews that went out three different Saturdays in April. Lots of people from different areas helped. We, we had our priceless auction. It raised a little over 3,000. We had 71 people volunteer, giving 312 volunteer hours, and about 75 people attended. It was good. Brown and Associates was our vital volunteer for the month. They, they took the lead on the auction, and so that, that was good. For the total of April, we had 612 volunteer hours and 174 different volunteers that participated. April's one of our busier months, so May won't look near like that. Then we have this weekend, the Outback that happens on Friday, that's tomorrow. It's burgers, beans, beverages banned, and it's in conjunction with the preregistration for the Five State Poker Run, Motorcycle Run. So that happens from 6:00 to 10:00 tomorrow, and then the Five State Run is Saturday. So that's all we have coming up. Any questions? No?
I think we're all good.
See you tomorrow.
Agenda number eight is the public hearing on annexation petition of the city of Guyman
for annexation of property adjacent and contiguous to the city of Guyman.
We just need to open up to see if there's any feedback.
Okay. Does anybody have any public comments on the land that's going to be, being asked to be annexed in the next agenda item? Any public comment? Any public comments?
And then just close it.
Okay. Agenda, agenda number nine is discussion and possible action on approval of ordinance number 832, an ordinance annexing to the city of Guyman, Oklahoma, certain real estate adjacent to and contiguous to the limits of said city, providing for severability and repealing all ordinances in conflict. Is there any comments, discussion, motion?
This is a sucker complex.
Say that again.
Sucker complex. I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 832.
Second.
Got a motion in two seconds.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have four ayes.
Agenda number 10, item number 10, is discussion and possible action on notice of hearing to declare property a public nuisance and order removal of trash, weeds, and grass, and set the date for completion of work at the following property, Lot 10 in the north half of Lot 11 of Block 1 Nance Edition, AKA 305 North Lila. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. In your staff reports, we do have photos of the sites, or the property in question, but we do have a few slides up here I'd like to just kind of show you. This is when our code enforcement has actually been working with this for, my understanding is, well over a year to try to get this cleaned up, but we finally have brought it on the agenda to, to try to get action. This is what our first photos looked like from the site, the very next photo. The, the property owner has been working to try to get this cleaned up. I'm sorry, can I have you go one more down? I must have, I have a double picture in there. These just show you the site and how it looks, but I wanted to show you, there's a double slide in there that actually shows, they've been out there and they've really been working to get it cleaned up, and we'll go a little further. As you can see, that's looking back towards the back of the property. There's quite a bit of debris on the property itself. That would be the front porch, and we're showing you the notices that have been left there to notify the property owner. Once again, the front yard, and I, and that's, I'm afraid that we may not have pictures. I had it in, it was, should have been the second slide where it actually shows the work, because the property owner has been out there and they're working diligently to get this cleaned up. And, and so we've been in close contact with the property owner. Mrs. Reed's actually here tonight, but we, we were able to talk with them, and we have determined with the, the order of determination to set a date for completion on the cleanup of July 31st. And let me also add in there the estimate cost of the cleanup would be 3,500, but with working with the property owner, Phil, that that would get enough time for them to be able to get in there, clean it up, and also account for if we get any bad weather in between now and then. She's, she's actually bringing folks in to help her with the project as well. So that's our recommendation on the order would be for completion date of July 31st. If the project were not to be cleaned up by then, at which day, then we would come out on August 1st and start to bring crew, crews out to get that cleaned up. And like I said, the estimate for the completion of that work would be 3,500.
Any just, any questions, discussion? Do I have a motion?
You did say complete by July 31st.
That's correct. Also, there's a letter that the fire department had given to us that basically says that they, you feel this is an unsafe property as well. We were unable to get that in your packet, but I did leave that on the desk before you tonight.
It's in here. Doug, this is the, there's a picture of the back as well. Is that included since you said they've cleaned up the front?
Yes, they, it would clean up the entire property.
Two and a half months roughly, July 31st.
And like I said, this is a difficult property. There's a lot of debris. It's going to take a while. It's going to take some equipment to get in there, and the property owner is having to actually bring family in to help with the project, which is taking a little more time, and that's why we've been as flexible with this and pushed that aid out as far as we felt it was safe for the public to do.
Is that, do you think that's enough time to get, to get that cleaned up, ma'am?
I, I hope so. My brother is the one that lives there. I merely was the property owner, and it's just kind of a difficult situation. He, he, he has psoriasis very bad over his body, and now he has high blood pressure, and so, sorry, sorry. And so it's just been a very sensitive area. I've, I know they have worked with him for quite some time, but I think, you know, if you don't address it, maybe it'll go away. And this is the first time that I've been, it actually is in my name, but I don't really have anything to do with it other than it was in my name. And due to his illnesses, it's been very debilitating. He couldn't work, and so he didn't have a lot of resources, and monetarily especially. And then it's just a, you know, I don't want to say too much. He's my brother, and I love him very much, but it's also a mental type thing. And so it's a very sensitive thing. And so I've tried to not cause too much conflict, although I know I'm responsible, so we're just kind of at the end now. And I realize it is a fire hazard. I have no doubt about that, and I'm in full agreement with this city's opinion about what needs to be done, and, and hope this is a blessing that, because like Mr. Larry, I don't know how to pronounce his last name, said to me, this doesn't solve the problem of how it got this way. This only solves the cleanup. So it's just my prayer that, once it is cleaned up and that we can, because we realize cleaning it up is not the only problem. We have a structure in the back that needs to be taken down, and then also there's going to have to be some work done on the home itself. But I have talked to his son, Kai Ramirez, that lives in Amarillo again today, and he's trying to work his schedule, and he can run a backhoe and a skid loader and things, and we're planning to get a big construction container, or excuse me, trash construction container, so that we can get that stuff away. It's just, again, a very sensitive, because what may not, I don't look at it at the same eyes that my brother Randy does. And so, again, I, I probably am too big an enabler, and so, but I still don't want him, his illness with his blood pressure and his psoriasis. I mean, it's been, he's covered. I don't know if you've seen him. He wears shorts and flip flops in the wintertime because he can't wear shoes and pants because it's so bad. But I do feel like, I mean, I do feel like July the 31st, I'm not going to tell him that, so if anything's published anywhere, I hope it's not published, because I'm going to tell him June the 30th, because that's just what I'm going to do. But I've talked to his son and realized we're going to do, you know, our best to get it done by June 30th, but as I said, there is a lot of debris, there's a lot of, and two, you know, the funds are, I'm going to have to take care of it, and I'm going to have to budget that out because I just, just am for my situation. But, and so like I said, I understand that the trees and the backyard where they can get in, you know, fire hazard, that needs to be the top priority, and then we will focus on getting the building down after that. I'm not going to say I can get the building by July the 31st, because a lot of it has to do with funds, but I can get the backyard, I think, where at least it's, can be approved, and then we'll work on taking the building down, the shed in the back, and then fixing the structure of the house, because I realize that is also a problem. And, and I just appreciate your consideration, and well, like I said, this is the first time that, been working with me, it's just been with my brother Randy, and it's, we've seen where that's gotten us over these years, so I just, you know, I, we'll do my best, and I know his son Kai will as well, to make sure this gets taken care of no later than July the 31st.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it very much. Appreciate your time.
Any other discussion, motion?
Make a motion to declare property a public nuisance, property west 60th, Lot 1 and 2, Block 23 of the Funk Edition, better known as 115 Northeast 11th.
Wrong one.
Oh, I'm on the wrong one.
Yeah, I got the touch here this time.
Thank you. Property Lot 10, north half of Lot 11, Block 1 of the Nance Edition, better known as 305 North Lila.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number 11 is discussion and possible action on notice of hearing to declare property a public nuisance and order removal of trash, weeds, and grass, and set date for completion of work at the following property, the west 60 feet of Lot 1 and 2, Block 23 of the Funk Edition, also known as 115 Northeast 11th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you notice, that's why I'm hanging in the wings, is because the next few items. So, once again, this is a project that the staff has been working on. We've had numerous complaints over the years, and have, we've really been working to get these cleaned up for over a year as well. So we do have a picture up on the site. The next picture should, well, I don't know why those double images aren't showing. The property owner did get out, they did get out and they did mow the property. In some places, it has not been mowed completely, and there's a lot of debris that has been left. As you're looking through the slides, this is under a cardboard. That's high grass. That, once again, most of that has been mowed, but we've got these large cisterns, I don't know what else to call them, but that's, they look like to me. And one is broken down, and that is actually filled with debris as well. And there is debris back in the backyard. Once again, we have posted the property. We followed all the statutory requirements on this, and so we're here essentially asking for our order of determination, a date to have that completed by June 14th, and the actual cost estimate for cleaning- And the actual cost estimate for cleaning that property would be $1,500 on that. But, so if the property owners do not get in there and have this cleaned by that date, that's when we, again, would send crews in and, and get that taken care of, so.
June 14th?
June 14th. Is that what I said?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, June 14th for a date on that.
The property owner is here.
Okay, I'm sorry, I wasn't aware of that.
Would you like to address this? Please come up.
Yes?
Do you think that's enough time?
Well, actually, if I may make a statement. I apologize that the yard was left partially unmowed. The last time I mowed it, about six months ago, my mower bit the dust. And so, last week, my wife and I went to Liberal and bought a good used John Deere mower and we mowed it this week and picked up most of the trash and, and organized the, I guess you'd call boards and stuff and the cardboard. So, and the place looks a whole lot different than it did. And so I called city offices yesterday and spoke with somebody named Melissa, and that was the first time I heard anything about my wife's six-foot cylindrical yellow and white storage containers being an issue. One of them had the top broken out of it by a tree limb over the winter. And so I told her that we could move, move that if, if that's what it would take and spoke with my wife about it. We're going to make arrangements to, to move the plastic storage containers. They also said that there's a partially pushed over evergreen tree that's leaning over about 45 degrees. It got hit by an elm tree and last year and it's still alive. I'm hoping to be able to recover the tree by, by planting a post, tying it to the tree and pulling the, pulling the tree back over slowly while watering the roots. If, if that doesn't work, say we cut it down. But she said that, that was apparently an issue too. So what I'm requesting is 90 days to get that tree situation and the storage container issue taken care of, if that'd be okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, some of the issues that the property owner discussed is for the adjacent property, which is your next item on here. And so I had not mentioned the tree issue with that. And actually, we're not talking about the same tree. When you actually see the slides, you'll understand the tree that is an issue when we, we get to that portion of the property. But that's our recommendation for the June 14th date on this, so thank you.
So Mr. Perkins is asking till roughly the middle of August. Is that a problem?
That's a very long time to, to get this cleaned up. We've got neighbors that are complaining, you know, adjacent property owners that are affected by this. That would seem like an extensive amount of time to complete this project.
Okay, the, the earlier one, item 10, we did the 31st of July.
That's, and the reason that we did that is that is a extremely extensive project to do.
Okay.
This is not as large of a project, not as large of a property, and that's why we basically have given it a little over 30 days with that.
How long have we been trying to?
Excuse me?
How long have we been trying to get something done?
The, this, that's correct. That's correct. Letters have been sent out. This isn't the first time that the property owners have been contacted on, on different issues. We, I, my understanding is correct, there was a phone call yesterday on that, but this is the first time we've really heard on this, so.
In your report, it seems like you had a timeline on attempts to contact?
Yes, and I don't, I've, I've got the file in front of me where I can show you where we've tried.
October 5th, 17 is when it started.
Then November, then December?
Yes.
March?
Letter was delivered undeliverable back to us December 8, 2017.
The other difference, the other difference within the first property and the next two is debris on the first and like Doug said, extensive debris. This is mainly pertaining, yes, some debris, but not as much, but also the yard. Getting that mowed, if we went through to the August date, summer rain, growth.
And it, it has recently been mowed, with the exception of there are portions that were not mowed with it. Well, obviously, you know, you have to get out in the summer and mow every week.
Mr. Perkins stated that they, they've already went over there and cleaned some of it up, so I guess a month shouldn't be that big of a deal to get the rest cleaned up.
Sounds like, man, we're trying to get the containers moved, the two circular containers. Is that correct? Along with the mowing upkeep, but?
Yeah.
That's the next property.
Containers are out of compliance. Okay, any other questions, discussion, motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve declaring property a public nuisance and order removal of trash weeds and grass set for June 14th, 2018, for the completion of work for property West 60 foot of Lot 1 and 2, Block 23, better known as 115 Northeast 11th.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Alvedras? Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item 13 is discussion, possible, wait, 12. Thanks. You get a chance tonight. Agenda item number 12 is discussion, possible action on notice of hearing to declare property a public nuisance and order removal of trash weeds and grass and set a date for completion of work at the following property, East 80 feet of Lot 1 and 3, Block 23 of Funk Edition, also known as 1024 North Ellison. Mr. Moore, I think we've already pretty well talked about this.
Yes, and now I understand the problem, why the slides aren't coming up correctly. It would be the PowerPoint presentation that's on there. So if you were to back that up, back that up one more. That PowerPoint presentation, if you pick on that, and then it will be the last item I tried to condense the number of slides for brevity and also give an idea of what we saw today, because we do before, before we come before you, we go check the properties Appears the PowerPoint may not be updated on this computer, so, there you go. And if we, yes, you can use that. And then it should be the last item. I put title slides in front of all of them. So the next, yeah, that title slide number 19, you could start on slide number 20. That's dislocation map. 21 will actually, the very next slide actually shows when they started working the case with the abatement letters. And then that will also show you the next date. So if you can see, it has been mowed, but the tree in question is, there is a, the property owner was talking about the tree over here. Yes, we agree, that's still live. It's been damaged, can probably be staked and pulled back and still survive. What we're talking about is the tree in the front that is dead and that's a public health issue. And then the tree next to that, also there are some dead limbs on that. That tree's not, you know, I'm not an arborist, that tree's not completely dead, but the, the top of it definitely needs to be trimmed because that's a public health and safety issue with that. So as we go down the slides, you can see basically the issue there. It has been mowed, the backyard again was not mowed with this, not as much debris with this, but once again, the, the life and safety issues with the trees, that's right there to where, you know, if that comes down, it's going to come down on the city street.
Any questions?
Once again, the same date. We're looking at with the order of the June 14th and the estimated cost for cleanup would be the $1,500.
Any questions, discussion, motion?
I'd like to make a motion to declare property a public nuisance and order removal of trash weeds, grass, and set the date for June 14th of the work of the following property, East 80 Lot 1 and Block 1 and 3, Block 23 of the Funk Edition, also known as 1024 North Ellison.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second.
Alvedras?
Good luck, Mr. Perkins.
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number 13 is discussion and possible action on authorizing the mayor of the city of Guyman to apply for and receive an Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission state grant in the amount of $856,777, with city match of $50,894 and a federal aviation administration grant in the amount of $144,277, for a total project cost of $907,671, $907,671 for the design and construction of the runway lights, the ODALS system, the electric vault, wind cone, and signage project at the Guyman Municipal Airport conditional, conditional, upon receipt of both FAA and OAC grants and also to take such other action in connection with the grant necessary to the completion of the project. And that's for new runway lights and a navigation system.
Right, it's been a long process of going through. What this agreement will do is by giving it the blessing from the council, the FAA and OAC can go out for the grants. It's contingent upon that, so we're not, we're not, we don't have to do it if the FAA, if something happens or the OAC, even though I don't think anything will. But it's just an agreement, letting them know that we're in good faith, going to follow our process as well.
They've been quite nice to us the last couple of years.
It's a, it's a great, great thing for our airport.
Any discussion? Motion?
I'll make a motion that we authorize the mayor of the city of Guyman to apply for and receive an Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission state grant in the amount of $856,777, item 13.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number 14 is discussion and possible action on approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the OAC to reimburse the OAC with $144,277 of the city's banked FAA entitlement funds. The intergovernmental agreement is attached. Mr. Mitchell, do you have, Mr. Mitch, do you have, Mr. Wagner, do you have? I'll get it out here in a second. Do you have any?
Mr. Petty couldn't be here tonight, but he did review and he approves for the efficiency of it. And so do I. It's part of the same thing.
We've done this before.
Right. Again, contingent upon the grant being received.
Any questions, motion?
I make a motion that we approve the, of the intergovernmental agreement with the OAC to reimburse the OAC with $144,277, item 14.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number 15 is discussion and possible action on approval of Garver Construction Services contract, amendment number one, in the amount of $99,860 contingent on receiving the OAC funding for the project. There's a contract amendment attached. Any questions?
Garver's the engineer that's been, they've been doing it for a long time, they're the same engineers we're using.
I'll make a motion that we approve amendment number one of Garver Construction Service contract in the amount of $99,860.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Do you want to wait and do that after the utilities authority? Just wait. We'll do it, that last thing. Keep everybody, that way everybody doesn't, the rest of you don't get up and leave. Okay, any new business? Not standing adjourned as the Guyman Airport Authority, we'll reconvene as the Guyman Utilities We've already done agenda item number two. Agenda item number three is budget amendment number one for the GUA Fund 65 for an increase of $38,344.
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget amendment number one for the GUA Fund 65 and the increase of $38,344.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number four is discussion and possible action on approval of change order number two for an increase of $11,046 to slattery construction on the lift station rehabilitation project. Change order number two is attached.
So the change order, I think it was two meetings ago, we had a change order where we decreased $15,000, so this is kind of making up for that. What it's, what we're doing is on the seven lift stations, in the event of an emergency, we need to go hook up generators, so our lift stations will still go on and there's a switch that would be pulled. It's all universal, but we could hook up a generator and it won't backfeed into Tri County's lines and get somebody possibly injured. It's, it's a great feature to have.
Any discussion, motion?
I'd like to make a motion, approval of change order number two for an increase of $11,046 to slattery construction on the lift station rehabilitation project.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action on approval of application for payment number two in the amount of $68,630.63 to Cobalt Construction for the lift station and force main to serve the southeast Guyman project. Application for payment number two is attached.
So whenever we had the bids on these, there was three different contract companies that took care of three different ones. Cobalt is actually doing the liners on these, out on the Hurlem and project. That's just another payment among, off the 2015 A note, which those were dedicated funds.
Any questions, motion?
I make a motion that will approve of the application for payment number two in the amount of $68,630, $63 to Cobalt Construction, item five.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Reports of, from city manager and council.
You want me to go first?
You get to go first.
I want to say thank you to all of the employees who helped out with the cleanup day. It was a huge success. I mean, they were, they were busy. There was a lot of people that really took part in that and I think it's a great benefit we provide to our citizens by having two locations. Of course, the weather kind of had to go back another week, but it was a wonderful turnout and I appreciate all the staff that helped do that.
The Alps looks really good. Good job.
Yeah, I was going to say, the cleanup with the Pioneer Days, I mean, we prepped so long before, but there's a lot of work that goes in even afterwards, whether it's trash or debris or anything else that's blown around. It's, they got after it this week, is what I'm saying, and I appreciate that as well. And in y'alls, I left y'all some different things, but the main one I really want to point out is that, the sales tax sheet. And I was kind of surprised to see the number, but I got the report yesterday and it's up 10 percent, so that's a step in the right direction, so. Other than that, that's all I got.
Anybody have anything else?
I do, mayor. I do, Mayor. I want to start out by thanking Pete Hedrick and Chief Bab for helping us with our park on the, in the adopted park program. We have Prairie Dog Point, and we plan, they helped us with the mulch spreading, and I hear Chief Bab's pretty handy with a skid loader, so that's, you could add that to your resume. I want to, I want to recognize the Guyman High School cross-country teams, boys and girls cross-country team. I don't think there's enough recognition for those, those teams, along with the Guyman Boys Soccer Team. Their coaches, Andy Brown, Mark McMurphy, John Messa, Kevin Schellhorst, they, they put in a lot of time, and they, they tend to always compete and make it far into, into state, and they represent Guyman in a positive way when they go downstate. So I'd like to just recognize the cross-country teams, the soccer team, and I'll leave the golf to the mayor. That's all I have.
I might not want to.
If you don't, I will.
You will, well, all right. Any other reports?
I've got one.
Well, then go.
I got an email that the person said I would not read at council, so I'm going to read it. It says, "How in the world can you guys buy golf carts when the streets are in such disrepair? Good streets benefit all of us, not just a few." I read it, and at the same time, I did call the individual and explain to them that we are in the process of starting to work on our streets.
16 is discussion and possible action on approval for the recommendation of award in the amount of $705,911 to Libra Electric Company for the construction of the runway lights, ODALS system, vaults, wind cone, and signage project at the Guyman Regional Airport, contingent on receiving OAC funding for the project. Again, contingent.
We, after we did the bid package, this is the one that won, lowest bidder, and that Garver has recommended.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a recommendation of award in the amount of $705,911 to Libra Electric Company for the construction of the runway lights, item 16.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number 17 is discussion and possible action on approval of the budget amendments for the following funds. Budget amendment number one for the General Fund 01, for an increase of $14,951. 17.1.1 is budget amendment number two for the Guyman Development Fund 16, for an increase of $1,700. 17.1.2 is budget amendment number one for the Hotel Motel Tax Fund, for an increase of $2,522.
The budget amendments are just being done now, since we've kind of followed up month five instead of at the end of the year, which we'll do that as well, but it just won't be as, as much, just kind of getting ahead of it.
Any questions, motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve budget amendments number one, budget amendment number two, and budget amendment number 1.2.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Is there any new business? Not stand adjourned as the Guyman City Council, and will re-adjourn as the Guyman, what do you want to do? Let's do, let's do Airport Authority, since we've been talking about that. Everybody ready?
Yeah.
Call a meeting of the, special meeting of the Guyman Airport Authority to order. Agenda item two is approve the minutes of the special meeting of the March 8th, 2018 meeting.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the special meeting, March 8th, 2018.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number three is discussion and possible action on authorizing the mayor of the city of Guyman to apply for and receive an Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission state grant in the amount of $8,500, $8,500, $800,560, $85677, with a city match of $50,894, and a federal aviation administration grant in the amount of $144,277, for a total project cost of $907,671, for the design and construction of the runway lights, ODALS system, vault, wind cone, and signage project at the Guyman Municipal Airport, contingent upon the receipt of both FAA and OAC grants, and also to take such other action in connection with the grant necessarily to the completion of the project.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item three.
I'll second.
It's the shingles. It's what it is. Get your shingles shot. Agenda item number four, we got to vote. Come on, let it out.
Alvedras?
I don't know what went on there. Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number four, is discussion and possible action on approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the OAC to reimburse the OAC with the $144,277 for the city's banked FAA entitlement funds.
I'll make a motion that we approve item number four.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
All right, I said aye. Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action on approval of Garver Construction Services Contract Amendment Number One, in the amount of $99,860, contingent on receiving OAC funding for the project.
I'd like to make a motion, approval of Garver Construction Services Contract Amendment Number One, in the amount of $99,860, contingent on receiving the OAC funding for the project.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number six is discussion and possible action on approval for the recommendation of award in the amount of $705,911 to Libra Electric Company for the construction of the runway lights, ODALS system, vault, wind cone, and signage project at the Guyman Regional Airport, contingent on receiving OAC funding for the project.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item six. Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number seven is reports from city manager and council members.
And we do have a plan going forward, and also that the golf equipment out at the golf course is important to our quality of life issues here in Guyman. So, but I told him I would read it, and he didn't believe me, so I thought I'd better read it. Now, if you're going to talk about the golf, I'll let you.
I'll talk about it.
Okay.
I guess. Nothing? Well, okay. Well, first off, I want to remind everybody, and Melon did, that this weekend is the five states poker run, and with the weather and the outlook for the weather through the weekend, I think it's going to be an outstanding turnout. Last year, they had, I think, about 1,000 bikes. I think they'll have more than that this year because of the weather. And it's, it's a big day, a big weekend in Guyman, but do keep your, do keep your attention up, because a motorcycle's a little different vehicle out there on the road than, so be vigilant for those folks, and they are, they spend a lot of money in Guyman. I want to congratulate everybody that worked on the Pioneer Days. I think it was a pretty good success, from what I'm hearing about the rodeo and other things. And it's just part of, part of the quality of living in our community, and the involvement and the time and effort that people put into it. Next to last, I'm going to, I'll brag, and I hope so. But I will, but our, you know, I'm a very, I'm a real fortunate guy, because I get to live in Guyman, I've lived here all my life, but also this year, I've been more than fortunate, because probably one of the few grandfathers in state Oklahoma that's had three grandsons that all play on the high school golf team together. And one's a senior, and two of them are freshmen. Well, this last week, they qualified and went to state, the state tournament, and after they played the first 36 holes, it didn't look real rosy for the number, for the oldest grandson, because he's quite a golfer. And if most of you don't know, I'll enlighten you, but the ability to play golf skips about every other or every third generation, so that's my excuse, and I'm sticking with it. But, but anyway, on the second day, my grandson Grayson Wallace, who's a senior, and he signed with Wichita State, he came in and he had shot a 73, 72 the first day, shot a 73 the second day. He came in, and he didn't think that was going to be enough to beat the kid that was ahead of him. Well, as the day went on, in fact, the kid's dad is helps coaching Guthrie, and he came and found Connor, or Grayson, excuse me, and to inform him that, right now, he was the state champion for 5A, because the other kid was like eight over, and there wasn't, probably wasn't any way he was going to make it. So Grayson is Guyman's fourth state medalist in 5A, the golf team finished sixth, and...
Pretty nice.
It is.
Yeah. We probably ought to congratulate.
I'm proud of them all.
You should be. We probably ought to congratulate the ladies golf course team for going to state, too.
They did, too, and they did well, and, and I would like, I was thinking about, we have a tremendous amount of young people in our high school that have been state champions this year, whether it's been speech and debate, other things, cross-country, whatever, and we've been kind of delinquent, not delinquent, it's not probably the right word, but I'm going to use that. Anyway, we, we probably should, before the end of the year, I think we ought to bring them all in and give them certificates or commendations, make a night of it before they have their deal, because there's one thing that we all need to remember as adults. Everything we do here as a city council, everything we do in our adult life is not really for us, it's for the youth of our country and our kids and our grandkids. So we need to recognize that, and I think that'd be a good thing. And I'm going to close on, anybody got anything else?
No, that'd be a great thing.
I got one more thing, to add to Larry's email that you read. Next council meeting, we will be addressing that specifically.
Streets?
Yes.
Okay. Well, anyway, the last thing, if you hadn't got your shingles shot, go get it. Trust me, seven weeks of this, you don't want it. Anybody get anything else?
No, sir.
New business? We'll stand adjourned. Thank everybody for coming.